I'm on my phone until I can figure my computer out.
Are you at school? Yeah, no.
No, I'm at home.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Mayor, it is 9:02 and we are live.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Madam Clerk. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 3rd, 2025 Free Agenda Meeting for the City of Lake Worth Beach. Can I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McFoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Sagrich.
Present.
Okay, just in the interest of time, I hate to have, you know, I think everyone should have an equal opportunity to speak. So what I'm going to do, we have an hour, so I'm going to just break it down into like five-minute chunks for everybody, you know, if you need to use that much time. Who has a burning thing they'd like to start with for five minutes? Anybody? Nobody? There's nothing to talk about today?
Um, I, I, I can't, I can't figure out how to raise my hand right now.
Um, okay, just shout out.
Um, for Monday's meeting, um, with the, because it's a special city commission meeting, it's not an actual workshop. Are, are we going to be cognizant on how much time we spend on these two conversations so not to send them to workshop? Because I would hate to have the special meeting and then, you know, too much time gets talked and we don't make any decisions. So I just wanted to find out if there was, because I haven't listened to the last meeting to see if you guys had come up with a plan of attack for that.
Attack being an interesting word. Um, colleagues, what say you?
We can, we can always waive the 30-minute, um, limit and vote on it.
I know, but we're having a special, I think Sarah's point is we're having a special meeting on it. So we should be prepared to, okay. I see Mr. Sagrich's hand up.
I thought we had asked that each of the charter amendments be its own item on the agenda and therefore worthy of its own discussion timeline.
Oh, I think we will do that.
Because that's not what the agenda says. And that's where Sarah's concern is coming into. The clerk has her hand up.
I'm sorry, the clerk. Oh, good morning, Ms. Coin.
Good morning. Six special meetings are really different than regular meetings in that there's normally just one or two topics. I don't time them. So it'll take as long as it takes. I wouldn't worry about the 30 minutes for that.
And that's what concerns me is that, you know, it's a meeting that starts at six, and if we want the community's input, I just think that it would behoove us to have some kind of, like you said today, Madam Mayor, five minutes each. Set the precedent for each charter amendment. We're going to give each person a bite at the apple at three minutes, five minutes, so we can move the meeting along and actually get real decisions made at this meeting on Monday.
Right. I mean, it says potential charter amendments. I mean, that's, Anthony, that's kind of an open, you know, there's, there's a list of them.
The issue there is that people making public comment will be limited to one public comment per agenda item. And I believe the reason...
Well, I don't think, I don't think, no, I don't, you're, I think you're making an assumption. I think as we discuss an agenda item, we'll have public comment. It's just, the agenda is just set up differently for something like that.
So to be clear, you are going to allow public comment on each of the individual charter amendments. So if somebody wanted to make seven public comments, you're, we're going to allow that?
We'll be there till late, but yeah.
Okay, and can we put...
They'll have two minutes each.
Can we put a time certain on each commissioner's comments per, per amendment?
I think that would be... Five minutes each. I mean, we've got plenty of time to think about it ahead of time. Congress only gets five minutes, so I think we need to take, I'll take input from people, but I, you know, this, the droning on and on at some point.
So each commissioner gets five minutes per amendment?
Correct. I mean, I think, what do you think? I think that works. I'm writing, I'm taking notes.
I think that's suffice. I mean, I see everybody else's hands up.
Yeah, I know. Okay. We'll go, um, Mr. McFoy?
Uh, I just would like to support Commissioner Sagrich's request, if I understood it correctly, that each of the proposed amendments be made an individual item on the agenda and that we formally revise the agenda to reflect that. Um, that way it's clear to the public, should have been done that way originally, but it's clear to the public, because that's what we, Mayor, you're shaking your head a lot, but that is...
It says we're discussing them, and if there's, we have now...
Madam Mayor, you're interrupting me. May I finish?
You may.
Thank you. Um, what we told the public is that they would be allowed to comment individually on each one. The agenda, by making it an individual item for each amendment, that would make that clear, that that is what in fact we are telling people. Right now it is unclear. And I don't see any harm in making each one an agenda item so that the public, anybody who looks over the weekend, um, can see, oh, okay, I see each one is an item and away we go. I don't, you know, I don't see that there's any harm in that, and it makes it clear what our attention...
I would ask the clerk, um, or just, or put a note that each item will be discussed separately and public comment will be allowed for each item, something like that.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
I will republish after the meeting and I will put each item, I'll have A and then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and write, "Public comment will be available for each separate amendment."
I didn't think it was that confusing, but go ahead. Sure, why not?
All right, I'll do that after this meeting.
Okay. Um, Mimi, Ms. May?
Um, I was just going to say that I agree with Anthony and Curtis that it should be separate. And, and I'll tell you why, because when we had our, our, um, our, what are they called, town hall meetings, that was confusing. So having had experience doing this, talking to the, um, public about it, I'm just saying from experience, I think it would make it a lot easier if we did them one at a time.
Fine, I've, no, 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 no problem. And we are doing it. We'll do it one at a time. Um, Mr. Sagrich, your hand is still up. Do you have something?
Yeah, um, on that one topic, um, I would also like to have, um, in addition to each of the ones that are listed in there, um, if there are any additional ones that have come out of the community, that the commissioners each have five minutes to bring forward any additional suggestions, um, for referendum items. So in addition to the ones that are outlined, have a other, um, section there for us to, um...
Yeah, it's not a closed list, but I agree with you. Yeah, because I think one of us may have something we want to come up with.
Correct, but have it as a separate five minutes for, for discussion.
Okay.
Um, I have comments on other areas of the agenda, if we want to involve, if there's more discussion on this.
Let me just finish my notes that I, okay, um, shh, okay.
Oh, can I, before Anthony goes on to some other thing, can I say something else about this agenda?
Sure.
Do you guys think that it would behoove us to do the PBSO first, so we can release and then have...
That's not a bad idea.
I'm okay with that.
Um, that's fine.
I mean, I just would hate to have them have to sit there for three hours, because if you do five minutes on each agenda item, that's like 75 minutes. And I know nobody's going to, well, I don't know that. I'm hoping nobody's going to take all five minutes for each of the agenda items. But we're looking at a possible three hours. So I don't think it would be fair for them to sit through that.
Yep, that's fine.
I mean, somebody has to stay, but not all of them.
Ms. Coin?
Yes, yeah.
Um, so I'm gonna call Wendy then, because then it's a possibility that she would be sitting there.
Oh, I forgot about Wendy.
So with all due respect, how about if she comes, she goes first, she answers your questions, talks about any potential updates, and then she could leave, and then we'll go into the PBSO, um, report, do that section, and do the charter amendments later, because she would really be necessary for that part?
Yeah, I know, that works. I'm sorry, I forgot about her. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McFoy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, uh, maybe my math isn't very good, but, um, five commissioners, five minutes each is 25 minutes times seven amendments. Uh, let's say it's half an hour each to make it easier to calculate. That's three and a half hours just for the commissioners to speak. I would guess, based on the town halls, that there will be quite a bit of public comment. Um, I wonder whether we should limit ourselves, I know, everybody sit down, but, um, but I'm suggesting maybe we need to limit ourselves, because just do the math. That's an awful lot of time just for us, and I think sort of what we slated this meeting was that it was to hear from the public.
Oh, wow.
So maybe three minutes, two minutes, I don't know, for each of us.
Um, I, I, you're right, I mean, the number of the time is pretty crazy if we do, um, that. So, um, Mr. Sagrich, is that a response?
Yeah, well, we, we originally said that, you know, in order to gather public feedback, we were going to host our own town halls and, and meet with our public. Um, so hopefully, um, a lot of those questions have gotten answered, and I think certain items will go quicker than others. Um, I'd rather have the time and not use it.
Um, I mean, although, when you talk about, I mean, there were quite a few people at both of the meetings, but that's, it may be the very same people that show up at the, uh, at this meeting, which would not be surprising, so.
Madam Mayor?
Ma, oh, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Um, while I understand Commissioner Sagrich's thoughts, there are some of us who couldn't hold the town hall with their district because of unforeseen circumstances. Um, I, I do agree with Mr. McFoy that I think five minutes might be too much. Maybe we can just say three, and if we need to go back to something, um, I think that that would be, you know, a, a good time certain just to move the meeting along. And obviously listen to each other's insights of what you, you know, gathered at your town halls, and some of us weren't able to hold those.
Uh, Mr., thank you. Mr. McFoy?
Um, yeah, that, it, no, I, I can take my hand down, it's been said.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so that's, so at this point, we're, so where are we at? Are we going to do five and hope we don't use it, or do three, and if we need more time?
I would say three if we need more time.
Yeah, I mean, I, either way, I think that's, that's, you know, minutes are going to count. Mimi and Anthony, your hand is up?
I believe five, because these topics are very, very important.
Well, well, I mean, it's, we've got, it's a loaded agenda, seven items.
Plus the PBSO.
No, I know, right, plus...
Plus public comments. It'll be written in right onto the record. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a five, a five-hour meeting.
Five-hour meeting. Um, well... Yeah, um, starts at six, seven, eight, and so we're talking about 11, 12 o'clock again.
Are we planning on listening to the public first?
We could do that.
That might sort us up.
I think that, um, that, I think it's, we are looking for the public input, so I, I have, does anybody have a problem with that?
I don't.
I, I actually welcome that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I prefer that.
So public first.
Public first, then us.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. And in terms of the time, um, let's stick with three minutes, and if you need more, you know, if, well...
We'll sort it out.
Yeah, let's sort it, but hopefully, it's, and I'm encouraged, Mr. McFoy, that you're, um, talking about a little bit of time. Excuse me.
I, I appreciate the offer.
Um...
Glad to do it.
I take it when I can get it. Okay, um, so does that cover Monday?
Sounds good.
Okay, so Tuesday's agenda. Any thoughts? It's really quiet.
I just, can I, oh, sorry, Anthony has his hand up.
Yeah, I see Anthony's hand is up.
Okay, so on, uh, Tuesday, I know we have the, the second reading of that, I believe it was chapter 23 or 21, the long one. Um, as part of that, when we made our motion, um, was to direct staff to, um, provide a definition for single-use plan development. Um, I just want to confirm that that's on our, our backlog and in staff's queue. Uh, maybe Jamie or Troy can just address, make sure that that's on there, because that was a condition of approval.
I'm waiting to hear. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was...
You said single-use, correct?
Yeah, single-use plan development.
Um...
I have a thing on that, that item as well.
So do I. Um, Anthony, can we go to Mimi's comment on that? Can we stick to the line? Okay, let's go to Mimi then.
Um, I just, I, I know when we brought it forward before, we talked about, um, staff not using the term "housekeeping items." And because we said that, you know, you, we're changing, you know, our LDRs. There's nothing housekeeping about that unless you're taking out a comma. And so I find that, you know, um, I know it's the second reading, but I still have a problem with that.
I agree with you. I was looking, I was at the, looking at it yesterday in my book, and...
Like, that, that's a waste of...
It's a lot.
It's a, but it's a waste to address several housekeeping items and minor changes for clarity as well as amended, blah, blah, blah.
And they're not, they're not.
Just tell us, yeah, and, and tell us what it is. I mean, I just find that to be almost offensive, like they're trying to flip something.
And I'm sure they're not, and I think just the way, but here's what I was thinking about that, because I was sitting against it going, wow, you know, I mean, there's like, there's just a lot in there I'm still not sure about, or, or it hasn't really been explained, you know. Well, when, and I was thinking about this, and I think Anthony, you've, you know, mentioned this, you know, when something like this is coming up, as, as, as big as that, uh, item is, I, I would like to get it, you know, when, when the staff is ready, when the staff is prepared, what they feel is ready. I would like us to get it to review before we set it on an agenda. If that makes any sense to you. Because we get it, we have a week to do it, which if you don't have a one-on-one with William at that point, it's a lot, we're making decisions about things that we, I apologize to my dog, she's deaf, and if I tell her to be quiet, it... Um, Anthony?
We can't hear her.
Oh, good, okay.
I, I had similar concerns, Mayor, with, with kind of the process of, of how these come forward, and had good discussion with Jamie, uh, about that. Um, some of this stuff, you know, has to move forward, otherwise the wheels will come to a grinding halt.
Right.
Um, but something like this, that is this large, I think, you know, maybe at, at Jamie's discretion, he can give us a sneak pre- or an early preview to give us more time. Uh, but Jamie did make a good point in our one-on-ones, that you, you can't always do that, otherwise
No.
the wheels are going to come to a screeching.
No, no, no.
But I do support your comment on, on this particular item.
Yeah, I mean, on these big chain, you know, when it's something, it's, yeah, obviously there are time-sensitive things we have to do, and I'm not suggesting we, but something like this, which is very long, very technical, um...
And I agree with Mimi about the housekeeping. I, I...
I thought we weren't...
There's such thing as housekeeping. Um, we need everything.
So, um, okay, so it's on for the second. Do we want, I mean...
Do we want to...
Do we want to postpone it so that we have more time to review it?
I, I would, I think we're...
Sarah's hand is up.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, I would, I would love to postpone this. The first reading, um, I was on Zoom, obviously, and it, the, the dissertations, and I, this is something that should, to me, should have been just a special quick workshop, addressing only LDRs and, and whatever that quote-unquote "housekeeping" was. And I think that when we keep putting these heavy items on these agendas, we're not getting the work done, and then we get, like, like you always say, Mayor, we're tired, it's, it's late, it's cranky. To me, I would, would have preferred and prefer going forward, anything that has to do with these LDRs or landscape development changes, or things that are going before planning and zoning that affect the, the, the future of the city. I think that we should have either a workshop or a special meeting, or that item only on agenda, because we want to review each item individually, and we want to review what planning and zoning of a historical board has given us, and it just gets too heavy.
It, it's huge. And you read through that thing, and it's just like, I mean, I don't, it's...
Yeah, I agree.
And you're right, if it's only one thing, that's fine, but if you're reading that, and you're reading the parking garage, and you're preparing agenda items, and it's like, wow. I mean, I know we have a lot to do.
So do we have a move to take this item off and, and...
Do we have consensus to do that?
I, I consent to that.
I support...
Where are we going to put it? And Jamie has his hand up.
Well, okay, Jamie?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mr. Brown.
So I, I guess the question would be, yeah, so I guess the question would be, moving forward, because we have a lot of, obviously you guys know we have a lot of things that need to change in the code, a lot of LDR things. Moving forward, do we want to always bring those to a workshop first before putting them on an agenda? Because as Commissioner Sagrich was saying before, we've got a lot to do, and this is going to really slow down the process. So I just want to make sure we're setting up expectations upfront, so you guys are aware that stuff is going to really slow down. But we can do that and not bring these things forward and put them on the agenda for you guys for first and second reading, if you guys always want these to go to a workshop first before they hit an actual commission agenda. I just want to make sure we're doing it the, the way you guys want to set it up.
I don't think everyone has to go to a workshop, but when you have 18 things on one item that needs to be disseminated, that's heavy. If it's one or...
And it's a lot.
If it's one or two items, and this is my opinion, and we can get through it, and it's, you know, simple and not complex, yes, but if it's, you know, seven, eight, nine items in one, in, in one item that needs to be addressed, I think that that's where it gets too much.
So the threshold would be the actual quantity that's being addressed and not the complexity, because some of these are simple, bold changes.
I think that when you put it all together is when it becomes overly overwhelming and complex.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because, because if we don't have it set properly, it's really up to interpretation as to, well, I guess staff felt this could go on because it's not that complex, or you have items, but it's only, you know, a, a term change on most of these. But then you guys might look at that and say, no, this should have definitely gone to a workshop. So I'm trying to get some kind of consistency, so there's, there's not this, this vagueness.
Well, from my perspective, it seems like something, I mean, when you have an audience that does this, and this, and this, and this, and that, and this, and this, and this, and this, at least, at least, I think we should at least have the opportunity to have a one-on-one with, from someone from the department that can actually explain what's going on, whether it's, you know, whether we have a workshop, or, you know, I just think we need to find a vehicle to not put it on an agenda and...
Having not talked about it previously, yeah.
Okay, there's a lot of hands up. Um, Ms. May, you've got your hand up, you just spoke, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if maybe, and don't shoot me, guys, what if we put this, kind of like Anthony was saying the other night, for, if we put stuff like this on the utility meeting? And make, like he was saying, that make it the, um, I don't remember what term you used, but, um, I don't know.
Like a decree.
If you put LDRs on the utility, or if you put like, I'm just throwing out ideas to try to make it so that we can still do it, but not necessarily, um, because we have to have the same people at the utility meeting, really, lawyers and everybody else. It just, the difference is you'd have to have William.
Yeah, or his staff, um...
I mean, I don't know, I, I want to hear what everybody else says, but we do have that third meeting. I, 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 if we put stuff like this on it, it could ma, make it that we have less things being pushed to it. I, I don't know, I want to listen to everybody else. I'm going to put my hand up.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. Um, Mr. McFoy?
Just, I agree with, with the idea that where there's a lot of complex things like this, like this particular item, at least let's have, and basically what the mayor said, that let's make sure that there's a, that it comes to us way before the meeting agenda comes out, that we can meet with, you know, that meetings are set up to go over it, make sure that we understand that they really are housekeeping, and that they don't have major implications, or they're minor changes, or whatever it is. I don't know that all of them need to go to a workshop, but, but something, because otherwise we're, yeah, I, I'll, that's enough, I think.
Mr. Sagrich, then Ms., then Ms. Malaga.
I, I look at this a little bit differently. I think we have that opportunity in the pre-agenda workshop. On this particular item, I believe the time to table it, or, or extend it out, or create a workshop from it, was when it was under first reading, and we had our pre-agenda meeting. And at that time, people could have voiced and said, hey, I haven't had enough time to get my one-on-ones done. Um, I don't fully understand this. I need more time, and then we can grant consensus. Otherwise, Jamie and his team are going to be stuck between a rock and a hard place trying to read our minds as to what we've prepared for and what we haven't. On this particular item, we've now had over three and a half weeks with it. So if, you know, to me, if we're coming to today's meeting saying we haven't had enough time, I would ask ourselves to, to, you know, have some introspection and say, did I reach out to William? Did I try to have a one-on-one?
Well, William's been on vacation.
Well, and, and, and that's a valid point, Mayor, you know, so, you know, if that's the case, and that's why I agreed with you on this one particular topic, if you guys feel that you don't have enough information, I'm all for moving this off. What I don't want us to do is create the engine that just stalls everything because it's big and scary. We have that opportunity, and we've done it before, where we've said, four of us had said, where Mr. McFoy said, I, Mr. McFoy voiced, he didn't have enough time. And four of us came back and said, well, we did, and we moved forward with it. And that's how I think it should work. Um, we have our pre-agenda meeting. In that meeting, we can decide what we want to do with the agenda. If we have consensus that it's too complex, like this particular scenario, great, we, we do something with it. But I would, I would really caution us about trying to create some sort of measurement to give Jamie to do these pre-things. And believe me, Jamie and I went back and forth on this in a rather spirited debate and argument, and he convinced me that it would be a really bad thing, um, and that, you know, he, you know, he and Troy and Melissa, they're moving these things along. And if we find one where we have to say, whoa, put the brakes on, we can do that, we have that opportunity. But if we build brakes in, it's going to, we've got way too much to get done, um, as a team, um, and, and it's really going to gum up the work. So I would be in favor of just, let's act on individuals during the pre-agenda meetings and leave it at that. That's why we have these meetings.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Malaga?
I would be in favor of, of moving these big items to the utility meetings, um, for time and for consistency for the residents. And I think that we've made good policy changes over the past three and four years in regards to our agendas and the meetings, and this would just be one more step in the right direction.
So do we rename the utility meeting, the utility meeting, and other things in, as well?
Well, I mean, it could just be utility LDR, or it could be utility planning, I mean, whatever staff wants to come up with, but that last meeting of the month, I think is where this kind of stuff should be.
Okay, but we just have to let the public know that that's happening. And everybody has to make it very clear. Um, Ms. May, you, uh, Ms. Brown, you get your hand up.
Yeah, and, uh, we're going to have that, you, you guys have consensus, we're going to have that discussion item on, uh, the October, uh, 21st meeting, um, about, uh, how you guys want to possibly readjust the meetings, but I believe the Commissioner Sagrich's initial comments the other night were about keeping the other, the, the business of the city on that, that first and second commission meeting, and then that utility meeting being utilized for, I think, presentations, proclamations. I think he called the, the feel-good stuff. Um, so if, if we can just have that conversation at this October 21st meeting, how you guys want to lay these meetings out, if you want to rename the meetings, or how you guys want to do that. So that way, moving forward is very clear, and then we can let the public obviously know, um, what to expect at what meeting.
Yeah, we can discuss it, sure.
Yeah, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, just before you guys move off this topic, is the backlog and the stuff we have to do, there's so much. So staff, we're going to be running these things forward. We're going to be putting all this stuff on the agenda and trying to knock this stuff out, because that's what we've heard from all of you. If items pop up such as this, that you guys are like, okay, we need to stop on this one, we need to slow down, we need more time, all you can do is let us know. And we, we will easily do that on whatever items that is, that you guys feel that needs to happen on. Um, and also, please don't forget that anytime, especially on an item like this, if you've got questions, if you don't reach out to William individually, or if you couldn't find the time, just let me know. We can always bring in different directors to our one-on-ones, always, every week. We just need to know ahead of time, so we can make sure that they, uh, they clear their schedule to come in for that.
Do we at least agree that we're not going to use the word "housekeeping" anymore, unless it's really house...
Oh, trust me, that was already noted.
I thought we already did agree to that.
I, we did agree to that. I'm just sort of re...
You know, and the other thing, I'm just last point on this, is that there might be a possibility that the utility departments would want something on the first two that they wouldn't have to wait until the end of the month for. So I mean, maybe it's just kind of having three meetings.
That already happens. You, you guys...
But that's what I'm saying, instead of naming, um, commission meeting one, commission meeting two, utility, you could just have three meetings.
Three commissions.
It's what we do anyway, so what's the difference?
Right, we're there anyway, right. All right. Okay, so we're going to, are we going to pull it? We have consensus. Do we have consensus then to pull it for this? Oh, Ms. Lanahan, good morning.
Hi. Good morning. Uh, so on this, because it is an advertised public meeting, you need to open the meeting and continue it to a date certain.
Thank you.
So we'll do that at the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, and explain why.
Because there are notice requirements, and if you don't, uh, the statutes allow for you to continue ordinances to a date certain, otherwise you have to do all the noticing all over again.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So it's good, it's good for somebody to keep us straight. Okay, um, so we're going to, we're going to, I think we're going to go ahead and do that. So what else do people want to talk about on the agenda or otherwise? Mr. Sagrich, I see your hand is up.
So I had a, um, a, a question on one of the consent, uh, agenda items about the insurance premiums. Um, I was just wondering if, um, that was our entire insurance. It looked like it covered most of our liability lines. Um, but I would be interested in just getting from staff, I don't need an answer now, a list of our... A list of our insurances and, and the premiums, um, for all of the lines within the city. And then, um, on the settlement, it, it, it had to do with, uh, an employee thinking that there was an asbestos in, in a building and they said we did testing. My, my question is if, if we did testing and no asbestos was found, why wouldn't we fight this?
I'm gonna say because it'd be more expensive to do that, but, uh, staff, I mean, I, sometimes what we do, and maybe, you know, we have a, uh, for litigate, we have, there's an opportunity to have a litigation meeting. We generally have not done that for things like this, but, um, because of, of input, but, um, Elizabeth, Jamie, Troy, somebody?
Sure. So that's correct. So, um, anytime our risk claims are handled by outside counsel. And anytime that we have a claim, particularly when it's proceeding through, uh, to go to trial, we always do try to settle if we, if we can for, um, making sure that the person's costs are covered or, or whatever the issue is, depending on the city's liability in, in the matter. Settling is almost always less expensive than going to trial, even if you're correct, even if you have no liability, even if, you know, um, the plaintiff would get nothing from the city, it will still cost the city money to, to get that.
Doesn't that incentivize frivolous lawsuits by client, about people?
Yeah, but it hasn't. Well, we have not. I mean, this has been the way it's been for years and years and years, and there's not been flood, the floodgates have never opened. For that. It's not like we have, you know, you, you note it because there's, it's so rare that this happens, so. Um, I'm gonna, Mr. Segred?
Um, it would, it would be good to get a, a litigation update at some regular frequency. Um, or like you said, Mayor, you know, we used to have litigation meetings, but, uh, you know, just to understand what is in our litigation pipeline. Um, other than that, on the agenda, um, on the, uh, parking uh, and street, um, item, where we're setting the overnight, um, parking. I wanted to make sure that in whatever ordinance we pass, the city had the ability to, um, tow or boot immediately. Um, one of the big problems on H and, um, Southeast Coast, we go and we put a red tag, they've got five days to do something with that vehicle and they move it a couple spaces and they're fine to leave it there. Um, so we really do need the ability to tow or boot immediately, um, within the city. Uh, that's gonna be one of the only ways that we really can enforce this.
I would ask, um, our council about due process.
Jamie had his, Jamie had his hand up, so I was gonna let him. So there are regulations and laws regarding, um, towing from public rights away. We have looked into that before and the red tagging is the way to do that. Uh, so, but we can, we can look at booting and other enforcement mechanisms, but right now the ticketing is, um, is working to a certain extent, but we'll look at other options.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, this is one of the notes I had for this morning. Uh, one of the things I was gonna mention on this item, if you look at the actual updated ordinance, the time is actually one thirty to six thirty AM, but the staff report still says one to seven. So I was gonna make, we didn't obviously push out an update for this entire agenda just for those, just that, that one minor time change, but I was gonna mention that now as well as in the meeting. Just so people do understand, in the ordinance itself, it is one thirty to, uh, six thirty.
Okay. Okay, um, the waterways, I had sent an email, um, to Jamie and Troy and William about, so you're sunsetting waters. Have we talked to the folks who are on, I mean, it's, it's been in, it's been in idle, you know, not really, but have we talked to anybody on the, who's on the board to see what the deal is? Because we do have water that we should, you know, pay attention to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass this to the other clerks. I know she's been talking to each of the boards, getting ready for the item on the, uh, the twenty-first agenda.
Ms. Coin?
Um, I haven't, Juan just got back. She was on maternity leave and she is the liaison for that, so I have not spoken to her about it. But I know she's in favor of sunsetting the board.
But what's, I mean, why? I guess would be my question.
Because although we are on the Lake Worth Lagoon and we do, we don't, it's not under our jurisdiction.
Well, I know they're bringing back the blue, um, trail. Um, I know that's coming back. I just talked to somebody the other day, so I, you know, um, Christopher, then Mimi?
Um, I, I, I'm sensing from the mayor a bit of concern about sunsetting it and I would, uh, second that. Um, I, it, it, there's, certainly there is a question of what we have jurisdiction over, what we don't, but we do have influence and involvement with, in various ways of quite a bit of waterfront, um, and water related things. So, uh, a- and for instance, you know, algae in the Lake Worth Lagoon or water quality in general in the Lake Worth Lagoon affects us. So, um, I don't approve of the idea of sunsetting it. I think it's a good idea to reach out to whoever is currently on it, see whether, uh, they're interested in serving more, see whether there's any interest in the community and some people. Um, I, and we, you know, we, by having involvement, we obtained some grant money. Uh, wasn't necessarily through the board, but that could have been where that started. So that's my feeling about it.
Mr. Brown? You see, I always call on staff before I call on anybody else. Mr. Brown, did you have something to say?
Yeah, so the water, the, the Blue Way Trail, um, obviously I've been discussing with people at county as well. That went away initially because no one wanted to pay for it. And they were looking basically to the city to put funding in. But again, as, as you mentioned, we, we don't own the C fifty-one. Uh, we don't own any of that. So at the time, the city wasn't willing to put any money into, um, anything with the Blue Way and, and neither did, uh, any of the other municipalities around, neither did the county, neither did, so no one wanted to pay for it. So that's why it just kind of went away. And it seems like the, the same conversations are happening now, so I don't know where that's gonna go. Um, because no one has actually stepped up to say, yeah, we're willing on actually funding this and moving this forward, so.
I have heard it's coming, coming back. I mean, the, from the cities, from Lake Worth Beach's standpoint, it was Spillway Park and the effect of mechanical boat lifting on, you know, that, that was a concern, so. I still think that is a concern. You know, I, I came out against that at that time. And I think we should, you know, I just think we should have a, a word in it, whether it's the Waterway Commission, you know, Board or somebody, we should stay on top of that. They've got a few hands up. Let's start with Ms. May. I'm reading from left to right.
Um, okay, but my hand's up, um.
Something else. Anybody else wanna talk?
Waterway Board, it's just the fact that we have empty seats on all of our boards and we have to fill them. We've been pushing this way too far, way too long. This is not good.
I know, I, yeah, I thought we were gonna do it a while back. Mr. S- anything about Waterway, Mr. Segred? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna echo Mimi's concern about the other boards, but specifically on the Waterways, um, I'm, I, I'm not sure what it does. Um, and if they haven't been meeting and they haven't been reaching out, haven't been bringing stuff forward, um, I think we either need to completely replace everyone on it or establish a, a clear goal and mission for it. I think with some of these boards, we have mission creep and others, they flounder because they don't really have a clear mission as to how they can help us. So if.
Education Board being one of them.
Yeah, if we're not gonna set clear mission for them and establish clear meeting timelines and, and, and rules for them, I think it's just a waste of time to have it. You know, it looks nice on the website, but if they don't do anything, it's not helping us. So either we make it something useful or we dissolve it.
So let's talk to the people. I mean, I don't know why the people haven't met. I, I would say let's just talk to the people and find out, is there a reason there's? But I agree with you about the other boards. I mean, that's, but I, I would just say, maybe between now and the, and the meeting, someone could reach out. I think there's three people on the board and just see what's going on with them and then maybe some, I'm not saying we shouldn't sunset. I'm just saying, I think we can take a look at it. Mr. McBoy?
Yeah, just very quick to add to Jamie's, um, not only was there a ca- a concern about who would pay the cost for the boat lift, uh, part of that thing. Um, and I might distinguish on Blue, Blueways Trails or Blue Trails or whatever it was called. Part of the original idea of that was a kayak canoe trail system, um, that had nothing really to do with the boat lift. But po- part of the concern with the boat lift was not only the cost, but risk. Who is responsible for any risks associated with it? Because there would be considerable. Um, on the, uh, Waterways Board, I agree with Commissioner Segred. Let's, um, let's be in or out, but I would vote for let's be in, let's contact the members, let's see if there's some other people. There are things that, that we should have somebody looking at those things and, and I agree on specify their role. I think it is, but maybe we can improve it.
Maybe you could be helpful with doing that, um, Chris, as a, talking, you know, meter environmental stuff, just to see if it's worth it, to see what, what we really could do. Um, and it was the effect on sunset, on Spillway Park, as much as the risk or the cost, the effect of having that mechanical.
I- in addition, correct.
Okay, alright, so, um, okay.
Can we go back to the filling of the boards? Let's get a date right now that we can put this on the agenda because we have to do this.
I agree.
Jamie?
It will be, you, when the agenda comes out, uh, a week from today, you'll see it on for, uh, next, or the twenty-first, October twenty-first. We did said before it was gonna be the second meeting in October and that is what we are sticking to.
Okay, alright.
And is that to di- just clarifying, is that to discuss doing something about the boards or is that we're actually doing meetings to review applicants?
We need to get out the word that we're looking for.
I'm mostly, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the actual ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ordinance, wait a minute, ordinance for what? Do, are going, I mean, don't we have, we have a procedure to get people on the boards? Are we, what would the ordinance be for? You, are you talking about the Waterway or in general?
The ordinance is compiling all of the boards into one ordinance. You talked about reinstating the term limits because if you appoint people now, um, like say next, you appoint, started appointing people this month, they'd have no term limits. Also, the boards aren't consist, a lot of the language in the ordinances aren't consistent. I think it should be consistent. Elizabeth and I have worked on this for a long time. All the board liaisons have looked it over. And it's gonna be on the second meeting in October because we want that enforced and for when the new board members are, um, chosen.
So assuming we, assuming we approve what you guys have written, when would the new board members be, um, selected?
We could do it in November.
That was gonna be the next question. When would you guys want to set that up? Remember last time you guys did like a, like an all-day Saturday type thing? I didn't know what kind of.
Like we've done that before.
Yeah, if that's the format you guys still are interested in or, but, but would you guys like to do a weekend again or how, how would you prefer to do it?
Well, the Saturday works pretty well, I think. Um, how about everybody else?
Yeah, but we, we need, so if we're gonna reset everybody on the boards, that's great, but if we have somebody who quits in the middle of their term, we have to be able to replace them right away. That's, I mean, the Saturday thing is one thing, but the, I quit, not replaced for two years is not okay.
Well, but we're gonna, but if they quit, you're talking in, once, once we get it settled up, once, when somebody theoretically quits in the middle of a term?
Right, like when you don't have people no-shows and then you don't have forums and that's a problem.
Right.
So Melissa, in the new ordinance, does it have what to do when people drop out or quit or no-show or?
Yes, we would go back to how it was done before, which is when there's a vacancy, you'll be notified there's a vacancy and we would have, um, have them interviewed maybe, depending on how many people applied, maybe have a special meeting before the regular meeting, like we did for the, um, CRA.
Yeah, no, I love that. I love that there's a policy. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anthony? Melissa, your hand is up for something else or? No, okay.
No, I raised it for that.
I, I, I agree with getting some standardization on it. Um, I, I would like to make sure that we have time to discuss kind of each of the boards. Um, and their relative usefulness, um, during that meeting. Um, I would hate for this to be one big monolithic item and we get caught up discussing one particular board and run out of time. Um, so if, if we are gonna be discussing each of the boards, they should be broken out, um, separate items. Some of them will go very quick, but I, I suspect others, you know, there'll be more discussion.
I, I support that motion from, or that concept from Commissioner Segred.
Okay, Jamie Brown and then Ms. Ms. Coin?
Uh, yeah, I kinda like what you guys were speaking about earlier with the, uh, the other items of kinda separating everything out for, for Monday. Uh, Melissa, you wanna cover how we're gonna set that up for the twenty-first meeting?
Yes, so, um, there's one ordinance. It'll be on ten times. And, but it will highlight each board separately as a separate item.
Okay.
Fair enough. Mr. Segred, is that what you're thinking of? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I, um, this is not on the agenda, but I just wanna bring it up. I've gotten calls from a couple of people, the tree in front of David's, Dave's. Um, the landlord is very concerned that it's still there and, and have we come up with a plan for that? And could we just like take it out until it, until we decide what to do with it because it's, you can't get in front of his business. It's round.
Yeah, I spoke with them about last week. You said the landlord is concerned? Because we just updated them last week.
Well.
Um, yeah, so, so the, the trees that we're looking at for downtown, I believe it's a total of sixteen now. Um, the Dahoon Holly, uh, but only the male because the female is actually, um, produce flowers. Um, so you have to wait to a certain point of maturity, so you know which ones are male and female. Um, those are also ones I had mentioned before are in, uh, high demand for airports, believe it or not. So they are difficult to get. That will not be taking place before, uh, this season.
We don't want flowers or they're just messy or what's?
Messy.
The fruits, I think, is the concern.
Fruits, they're very messy. Um, so, uh, we were trying to get all that done prior to season. It's just not gonna happen with the inventory and everything else. We're gonna have to wait until after season's over. So we did let them know that that was not, and, and we're not gonna do anything with the tree in front of Dave's until we procured the replacements and we're doing that as part of that overall downtown, uh, when we replace the other trees and add the shade trees.
We can't take that one. I mean, that tree is causing so much damage. We can't take it out to.
We're, we're gonna deal with it for one more season. We don't wanna rip that out during, uh, during season.
I don't understand why not. We can, I mean, I hate to lose a tree, but we are gonna lose that tree. And in the meantime, we could take, we could cut it down and, and make that sidewalk passable before we go through the whole mishegas of the whole program.
There was, and, and we have no issue doing that. The whole plan before was to, once we procured all the trees, remove that tree, fix the pavers, immediately put the next tree in. So you didn't have this wide open where the tree used to be for an extended period of time until the next tree went in. And there was concern from the restaurant owner there as well, that that would be the case, where there would be a long period of time, where there would be nothing out front and no shade for anyone. Um, so we had made the decision that we will continue to try and address the ADA issues for this, uh, this next season until we can actually get it out of there. But if the direction is you guys would just rather remove it and just have months um, with nothing there, uh,
Couldn't we at least flatten out that space and?
That's what I'm saying. We're gonna have to do the best we can with, with what we have right there right now.
Well, I'll, I'll speak with them again, but I spoke with them yesterday.
And I spoke with Dave Plumba last week as well, which was a concern that that would just be gone for an extended period of time with no replacement.
Okay, then, then we're getting mixed messages from the, from the folk. Uh, Sarah, you've been quiet. I'll call on you first.
Thank you. Um, I, I am not very happy with leaving that trip hazard there and I understand, you know, beautification and shade and all that. But we are going into season, we are going into street painting, we, we, this is our busy time. And that is a major trip hazard and to me, we're just being too lackadaisical and just saying, we have to wait. I'm more in favor of taking it down, putting something there in the meantime. Um, like a sign that, you know, I was sick or I'm, I'll be replaced or something, um, to let the community know. But to me, that's just us being very relaxed and just open to a lawsuit that we don't need.
We could flatten it out and just put cement over it and.
Put a planter there. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. I don't care. I just think that it's, it's a huge liability at this point for the city.
Uh, Mr. Segred, then Mr. McBoy?
I would echo Sarah's concerns. You know, we, we have something on our consent. I would echo Sarah's concerns, you know, we have something on our consent agenda for $75,000 and we weren't at fault. What's gonna happen when we are at fault? Everyone knows that this tree is a hazard. Many of the business owners, I have not spoke to Dave, but other business owners down there are very concerned about it. I would be in favor of removing it, flattening it out, and then maybe allowing Dave to put up a, you know, very strong wind umbrella. You know, they have very, the cantilever umbrellas, they they cover a lot of space. And if we give him special dispensation to do that, they might even be able to bolt it where the tree was and he'll be able to get his patio shaded for one season, but I am not in favor of letting that go another season.
Of course DOT would have to approve whatever Dave wants to do, but that's technical. Mr. McBoy?
Yeah, two thoughts. One is I'm a lot less concerned convinced about the harm that the tree is doing. I'm also less convinced about the trip hazard that that cannot be resolved. I've gone there and looked at it. Resetting some of the bricks around it would be relatively straightforward and could be done and you'd have a flat surface or or at least smooth surface. It wouldn't necessarily be flat, but it'd be smooth. So I'm not as convinced about, you know, we are, have a huge liability or or that we can't fix that pretty easily. My other concern with the Duhon Hollies, I'm very familiar with Duhon Hollies, because they're a, you know, one of the main Everglades Tree Island trees, so I see them. And I, both in, out in the Everglades and in Everglades simulated area, there's one in the Lochsachi Refuge that I'm familiar with. They don't spread that much typically. They also, they like it wet. They, they're, that's why they're in the Everglades. They, they, especially in the southern part of the range, which this is, they need irrigation, and I don't think we have irrigation set up for the, you know, we'd have to handwater them, and I don't see us committing to do that. So I'm not crazy about that. It's a native species, I got no problem with that. Fine if you don't want the red berries for, you know, cleanliness. But it's really not going to be, if you, if your image is to have a shaded road canopy and a shaded sidewalk, I don't think it's gonna help. The other concern is if we're thinking of putting all of them to that, people have sort of condescended against doing that, because then if there any disease shows up, then they all go. So there's more of an argument for mixing it, although people do a lot of single species oaks and it seems to work. They seem to be okay. But another tree island species, Persia, it's related avocado, can't remember the common name, but Laurel Wilt came in and decimated it. So I I would look a little bit more on the choice of species. And I would look into smoothing out those bricks. I would do that right away. I think that's pretty easy to do. And and that reduces our risk greatly and could leave the tree there. My thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so the criteria we were looking at for downtown is, and I know Commissioner McBoy just mentioned that the spread, they don't spread that that much, we were actually looking for that. So that would cut down on the trimming that would be required, that actually when they're growing into the buildings, which which we don't own. We wanted something that wouldn't get incredibly large as far as a canopy, because then we're consistently cutting that away from the buildings. So that's why we were looking at that particular tree.
I'm sorry. Is that the, it seems to be the only tree of that of that was planted that's creating this problem? And I, do we know why?
I'm not sure. I mean, I'm.
That was, that was the one that just, that messed up. Mr. Segred?
I was just gonna say, you know, in terms of the hazard, I I've been down there and I saw a woman who had an automated wheelchair and she toppled over trying to to pass it. So I really do believe it's a present danger.
Clear and present?
Clear, a clear and present danger. Okay, Mr. Plancy. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, do we have, because again, we've heard from different owners downtown and from the owner of the business right there and everything, and and the concern of removing it right now. Again, we can try and address the pavers like we've been doing this whole time, but is there consensus right now to remove the tree in front of Dave's last resort?
No.
Yes.
I think there is, yeah.
I would consent.
It's gonna come down anyway, Chris, it's gonna come down.
And Vice Mayor, I know she said that, okay, so it looks like we have a 4-1, okay. Well, staff will get, get working on that.
I mean, nobody wants to remove it. It's a beautiful tree, but it's gonna come down anyway. So let's, if we can minimize our.
I just don't want someone to get hurt, and we're not being ADA. We can't satisfy one business owner for for their business when we have to think about everybody else who's walking past that spot.
And I'll obviously speak with Dave and everyone involved, so.
Okay, so it's just about wrap-up time. Any burning things that will, you're trying to, you're trying to schmush us with that puppy. You're trying to warm us up with that puppy. It'll work. Okay, we've anything else before we shut down? Is there anything going on this weekend that we all need to know about?
Well, Play opens, the play opens tonight.
Play opens tonight. Tomorrow night at the Duncan Theater, there is a Haitian movie called Jabari being shown, and it's a very sound, I looked at the trailer, it's, it looks, it seemed, it it says it talks a lot about, you know, Haitian life and that sort of thing. So I'm going to try to make it. Mr. Sword?
Wait, we also have the Education Foundation 5K at John Prince Park on Saturday morning, or Sunday morning, Sunday morning, weather permitting, so hopefully pray that we can get out there and get it done before the rains.
Okay, Mr. Sword, your first input, welcome.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners DJF, good morning. Just in reference to the weekend, so this is kinda hot off the press coming in, perhaps on the stream is gonna come out. But the pier was closed yesterday evening. I just received a report, it's gonna be closed all weekend, pending an assessment. So I'll defer to Mr. Mr. Jamie on that. Also, I'm tracking tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., is the Neighborhood Association monthly meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Lurssern Building, pending any questions, so I'll have.
Wait, which? Yeah, that's an APC.
An APC meeting, I'll be there.
So the pier's gonna be closed all weekend, that's, yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you for letting us know.
Oh, and and they postponed the opening of the farmers market.
Right.
But West Palm Beach is open.
Arms of Hope Gala tonight, don't, don't they?
Oh, that's tonight?
Yes, Arms of Hope Gala at the Beach Casino.
Oh, what time?
6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, I have a witch's potluck, so I can't. We're gonna be coming bruised. Mr. Sword again? Mr. Sword, do you have something else?
I'm sorry, I need to take my hand down.
Mr. Brown, close us out.
Stuart, don't go away yet. Would you mind informing them of what the addition we're looking to do this year for the Veterans Day celebration?
Okay, yeah, sure. So the the Veterans Day Celebration, historically is taking place in the Cultural Plaza. As I looked at the run of show, some of the events on there was more consistent with Memorial Day. So consulted with Rebecca, also consulted with social media experts, the Veterans Administration, who I used to work for. And it should be like a more of a celebration type event. So we're looking at bringing it down to the the oceanfront on Ocean Boulevard. There is a freefall team, all veteran freefall team, that's gonna jump 10,000 feet. They'll open their camp at about 2,000 feet with an American flag displayed. That'll kind of be the ending of the ceremony with the playing of the themes for all of the the branches. However, when we're doing our planning, we realized there was an event that was not on the calendar, which is the NA PC Fall Festival occurring in Bryant Park. So we've made a modification, we've cross-talked with with President NA PC. Hey, we don't wanna step on your event, so we're gonna execute at 2:00 p.m. and their Fall Festival kicks off at 3:00. So the Freefall Demonstration, tentatively, the primary drop zone will be in Bryant Park in the open space. NA PC is good with that. They they seem like they were appreciative of that, because it'd kind of bring more people in. So, pending any questions, Mr. Jamie, back to you.
And I just love the fact that we now have a drop zone for our veterans' celebrations. That's gonna be amazing. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, we're gonna have to close the jetty at Bryant Park temporarily for repairs. We have a lot of repairs that need to be done at the jetty, so I just wanna get.
The wood deck is, wood deck is.
Everything out there is a problem, so just in case anyone hears about the jetty or something like that, that's what's going on.
And one more thing about Veterans Day, we're gonna, we had the flash mob last year about light up the bridge for the veterans. And I wanna do that, we had over 100 people just on that first one, so that, you know, if the Neighborhood Association thing is winding down, I'll have plenty of gels and rubber bands. I'm just asking people to bring a flashlight. I'll be reaching out to the VFW, the American Legion, things like that. It was a wonderful event last year and quite a beautiful display, so I'd love to have more, you know, more involvement with that from everybody.
Understood.
Yeah, that's it. All right. Do we need a motion? We don't need a motion to close, do we?
No motions at workshops, Madam Mayor.
No motions at workshops, so have a wonderful weekend, everybody.